Thank you very much, Senators, for coming in early. It is -- we are on Bill 191. I recognize the author, the Vice Speaker, Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. May I? Yes. I'd like to move Bill 191-31 to the third reading file and ask for your opportunity to address there.
Yes.
As amended, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Vice Speaker, you may continue.
As per directive, before I start, I'd like to move that you be named as a third co-sponsor of the--
No objections. No objections. Malik.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 191 actually had its start two summers ago, much like your public--
Institute.
Institute.
Policy Institute, in turn.
I had a young high school student come and work for me two summers ago. He was -- he had been a member of the St. John Mock Trial Team and had gone off to competition. And when he came to work for me, I asked him what some of the issues were that he wanted to address, and we were talking about his experience in mock trial. And the schedule for mock trial, Madam Speaker, has it competition up until two weeks before going to nationals. Guam names its the winner on Law Day, May the first, and by the fourteenth or fifteenth, the kids are off to whatever city is hosting the national competition. So they don't have much, very much time to raise money for their trip. And he was telling me that his team, it was a small team, and they had to raise $30,000 in two weeks. They were very fortunate that their parents and the other parents at the school were able to assist them in raising the money. But other schools, if it had been another school that had won, I'm afraid that they probably would not have been able to be able to raise that kind of money. In the past, when we were awash in money, people used to go down to the governor's office, and the governor's office used to somehow find $30,000 to send them off for competition. But anyway, this young man, Joel Tribidani, was working for me, and so I told him to do some research and find out how many other young people were traveling off island. And he discovered that that school year, the forensics team was unable to go to national competition because they had no money. And that really is a tragedy, Madam Speaker, because we have some very talented young people here on island. This last year, when the St. John's Mock Trial Team went off, one of their young lawyers was recognized an outstanding attorney. You and I were at the Luhan House, and we watched the presentation by those young people that had their history exhibits. And those were excellent exhibits that were presented to us even only partially. And you may have recalled that the two young men from Father D went off to Washington, DC, and they won the gold medal in their -- in the competition. They were at the very top. We've had young people from Guam do very well in all kinds of competition. Just this last year, a young dancer from Guam did very well in national competition on television. So we have talented young people. The problem that we have is that we just don't have the kind of money to be able to assist them in their travels off island. So Joel came up with the idea that we establish a -- there was already established a sports travel fund, but that had been defunct for several years because it had no money. And he decided, he suggested to me and the staff that we establish a fund to -- for the travel for cultural and for educational purposes. And we would expand the current statute that allowed for close-up and junior statesmen to include science, mock trial, Forensics League, and a couple of other things, but to expand the coverage of who could go off on those kinds of competitions. And he -- so we tried this in the 30th Guam Legislature. Unfortunately, the legislature synodied, I mean adjourned synodide without passing the legislation. And so we reintroduced it again this year, and I want to thank the Committee on Appropriations for all the amendments that they made pursuant to the testimony that they received at the hearing. At the hearing, they received testimony in support of the legislation from PICE, the Governor's Council on-- Let's see if I can-- Prevention and Early Intervention Advisory: Community Empowerment. It's the young people from Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. You may have recalled them last couple of years ago when we were talking about the cigarettes and also for the increase in the drinking age. They were the young people that filled up this conference hearing room with the teal-colored t-shirts. They're very, very interesting young people, Madam Speaker, who understand the importance of trying to address these issues. So anyway, the committee has suggested that if we're going to be taking money from the Healthy Futures Fund, which is the intent in this bill, is to take $200,000 annually beginning FY 2012, I mean, beginning October 2012, which would be FY 13, that $200,000 go to the education fund and $200,000 go to the sports fund. The education fund would be handled by CAHA. The sports fund would be handled by Parks and Recreation, the commission there, and their respective boards. They would be able to provide grants of up to 50% of the travel and to make sure that these young people and their parents and their chaperones also work hard to try to raise some money, that they don't depend on this fund entirely. But it would be, it would authorize up to 50% of the travel of these groups to travel both for sports and for educational purposes and cultural purposes. But the other thing that the Committee on Appropriations has included in the amended version of the bill is to make sure that since these young people are going to be receiving money from the Healthy Futures Fund, that they commit themselves to a healthy lifestyle of being tobacco and alcohol-free. And so they're supposed to be working with PICE to make sure that they get the education or at least become mentors to try to make sure that they encourage everybody that they come in contact with to lead a healthy lifestyle, being alcohol and drug-free and cigarette-free and as a trade-off for them receiving assistance in their going off islands. And so, Madam Speaker, I bring this bill to the floor. I'm hoping that I get the support of my colleagues. The money will come from the Healthy Futures Fund, from the alcohol and tobacco taxes that we have imposed, and it'll be used to assist and encourage our young people to recognize that they have the capability of being number one in the country. And we've seen that some of our young people have become tops in the country in various competitions. But we'd just like to be able to assist them in lightening the burden that they have, either fundraising with their family or with their school, but to show them that this community is behind them, but also to convince them that this community will stand behind them in their academic and their sports endeavors, but they also have to pay back to the community by making sure that they support the principles of peace and lead a alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free life. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, on the motion, I have Senator Ada Tomada. Haga Tomas.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. I just have a question, though, if the author would yield. You know, in light of the recent reorganization where CAHA and several other entities come under now this organization called the Department of Chamorro Affairs, I'm just wondering, do we still have a director for CAHA? I thought that was done away with as a result of the reorganization.
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you yield to the question?
And thank you for the question, Senator. There is, the president of Department of Chamorro Affairs serves as the director of CAHA. And CAHA still exists. It cannot be subsumed into another agency because of the national, the NEA grant that it receives. And we have legislation that's being proposed right now to make sure, because when I was in Washington in February, I spoke to the NEA about this, the plan to try to put CAHA and DCA together. And they're not opposed to it as long as they have separate boards and that the policies and the mission and vision of CAHA continues to be fulfilled, that though they're under Department of Chamorro Affairs, that the grants that are given out by CAHA don't become single, singular, like Department of Chamorro Affairs, and just be only Chamorro grants, but to recognize all kinds of arts and different cultures within the community. So it's supposed to continue to exist, but the director of, I mean, the president of Department of Chamorro Affairs is supposed, is, is and has been serving in both capacities. We'll have to correct that in the statute of the reorganization when we get that introduced and passed.
Senator Ada--
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted the assurance that, in fact, you know, it was not at the time that this bill was introduced, that then subsequent to this was the reorganization and that. But if the author of the bill is satisfied that CAHA is in fact going to be the main player here, then I'm fine with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I stand in full support of this rather creative piece of legislation to provide support. I totally agree with the author in that the opportunity for our students to go abroad, the opportunity for them to see what others are like, to learn how well we have it on our island and how many times we beat others in different capacities and different levels. The author of this bill had spoken of a time when we had monies, and at that time, I actually oversaw the Department Curriculum and Instruction. And it was out of that budget where we funded close-up mock trial, you know, whatever types of curricular endeavors that we could provide for our students as a way of motivating and inspiring, as a way of having them compete. And as a matter of fact, this one particular year, the Southern High Mock Trial Group went, and when they came back, they were number two in the nation, although everyone who went and who saw it really believed they were actually number one. But whatever politics was at play happened. And at that time, I was just so incredibly proud that the private-public partnerships, our students, they prevailed. And just the honor and the achievement, and they just knew that they had it in them, that they are just as good, if not better, than anybody else across the nation. This year, our Okadu Group, brand-new ROTC group, first time they've competed, prevailed as number one across the nation. And so it is just important. It's important that we continue to provide these kinds of opportunities to our students, and our families do everything they can to help. But sometimes, we're not able to cough up enough that is needed because of where we are. It just costs a lot of money to get to where we need to get. So I really do appreciate this idea. I also further appreciate the idea that the youth chaperones are also going to be committed to lifestyles of healthy decisions, because oftentimes, I believe it's the adults who are issues and not the children. And so I'm glad, I'm very happy to see an adult chaperones embedded in here. I was kind of curious about the CAHA board, but I suppose more and more I'm learning what CAHA is really all about or should be all about. So I will trust in the author of this legislation, and I suppose we will all keep watchful eyes over it to make sure that if indeed or when this does pass, that it does do what we wanted it to do. So, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this as a measure to support our growing students with their growing minds, to show them, to show our island, to show the nation, that we are top quality here on our island. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Sidoz Masey, Madam Speaker, and Talawana Shizwus. I too would like to stand up and rise in support of Bill Number 191-31, and I want to thank the good Vice Speaker for giving me the opportunity to be his second co-sponsor of this bill. And before I talk briefly about why I support the bill, I'd just like to do a correction based on the actual bill that was presented, Madam Speaker, if I may. I spoke to the sponsor about it. When the bill was introduced, when it was first introduced in May of 2011, the sponsors of the bill, there was 14 sponsors of the bill, and I know that we included you as third co-sponsor, Madam Speaker, for today. But in all fairness, I'd like to just reflect that when we amended the copy, when we amended, when the bill was amended, it didn't include all the support from all the other, of my colleagues that were included. And if I may, not that I will take away from you being third co-sponsors, but everybody that's listed there, if they could just be included in as that, so it would read Vice Speaker Cruz, myself, you, Madam Speaker, Senator Monatiron, Senator Respechel, Senator Duñez, Senator Yamashita, Senator Guthers, Senator Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Mabini, Senator Blas Jr., Senator Rodriguez Jr., as all sponsors, because that was on the original intent, and they also supported this. So I hope my colleagues don't have an objection to making it right.
If that's the case, then we should just keep it right where whatever was the original bill, that it stands.
No objections, as promoted, I mean, as stated today, as right now. So there's no objection.
As reported out.
Yeah.
No objections, order.
Sidoz Masey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank you for your support of this bill as well. And as the good retiring speakers all spoke in support of this bill, it just gives a message, Madam Speaker, that as we support our young learning students in their efforts to promote culture, to promote camaraderie ship, promote fellowship with others around other countries, whether it be in sports, whether it be in mock trials, whether it be in competition for educational purposes, we say that we support those efforts. We believe that with their advocacy for healthy lifestyles, for participating and being alcohol and drug-free, and we, that you support the programs that will continue to grow Guam in this part of the region, but also in the international region, I want to say that the government will provide that kind of resource so that you can be able to go and compete. So as this bill, Madam Speaker, received a lot of positive testimony, including the Acting Superintendent of Education, Ms. Telling Titano. It received accolades and support from Linda Titano Rages from Pa'at Ataltono and others who came to show their support during the public hearing. I want to say that the good Vice Speaker and author of this legislation has done a good job in addressing the issues and concerns and working closely with those in the community who want to see this happen. So I rise in full support of this Bill 191-31, and I want to thank the Speaker for giving me the opportunity to be his second co-sponsor. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, any other speakers? Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
I'd just like to thank those that rose in support and asked that the bill be moved to voting file.
On the motion, intend to send Bill 191 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. Recognize Senator Duñez and substitute Bill Number 192.
Buenas tardes, honorably Speaker Wampat. Befino Chamorro, estina tempo, mona, sangengwa pino pony, loko pino pony. And I will introduce sigi fino chamorro. Masé chamorro naplingo, lo, para besigya fino chamorro sa sempre un dia utuwa ilanguajita, ana masu utagi fino chamorro. Madam Speaker, malagudzu tapega estina pino pony 192, gimi na tres, na tinaitai, sa malagudzu talu ta diskuti estina pino pony. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I decided to make it a policy for myself that whenever I have a chance to have a bill on the floor, I will try to exercise my limited knowledge in the Chamorro language and get better as we go along and introduce, placing my legislation that I've introduced into the third reading file to discuss it in Chamorro as I seek to gain a better knowledge of our language. Madam Speaker, Bill 192 is an opportunity to expand the potential of our people by allowing our young people and perhaps anyone really who's seeking higher education to have an opportunity to do so by receiving a scholarship and the means provided for within this legislation. Madam Speaker, when we first came into office this session, this 31st Guam Legislature, I had a great opportunity to receive a briefing from the good Dr. Underwood, president of the University of Guam, on the state of the University of Guam and the future going forward. And in doing so, I was inspired to try to introduce legislation like this, and I have companion legislation as well, that seeks to provide an opportunity for young people in whatever means to receive a post-secondary education and as a government and as businesses and as people of Guam, to do whatever we can to facilitate that dream and that need for post-secondary education to be successful. I was inspired because I ran on a campaign primarily towards workforce development and trying to help our young people grasp and get a better opportunity through education for their future. And in doing so, I ran on a platform that was very basic in nature in discussing the trades, in discussing opportunities, just simple introductory opportunities for getting a job. And that's still true today, Madam Speaker. But when I sat down and I talked to Dr. Underwood and engaged with him, it became apparent, his passion and other educators like Mario Alcada, the president of the University of Guam, you know, that at that time, the Superintendent of Education, Dr. Underwood, and just everybody who I talked to, including my good co-sponsor, Dr. Yamashita, that it's going to become compulsory almost soon that some sort of post-secondary education be required in order to attain a meaningful, productive job that one could provide for their families and for their future. And secondly, I was mainly inspired by Dr. Underwood saying, "Let's set the bar higher." Let's not talk to our young people and our children and in our educational system saying, you know, "It's going to be okay if you just get this skill and get a job," because it is going to be okay, and not everybody's on the same track. But the fact of the matter is, legislation such as this allows for an opportunity to, if you're shooting for the stars and you reach the moon, if done well. And Madam Speaker, it's really in that, in that spirit that I introduced this and other pieces of legislation that I'll be talking about throughout this session, that our companion bill is to this bill, 192. This particular one is aimed towards the Guam Community College in recognition as they are the workforce development leader in Guam, bar none, along with their great partnership now that they have with the Trades Academy, which is legislation that we will see later on down the road. Madam Speaker, this piece of legislation is not a magic bullet. It's really not a new idea, we all know that. It's another opportunity. Madam Speaker, I was just received good news while working on a project with my brother yesterday that one of my youngest nephews just started going to GCC. And, you know, my brother's of modest means, and as many of us, and his son qualified for the Pell Grant. And I'm so happy. I was happy to hear that. And in speaking to folks from GCC and UOG, this will have no effect on those opportunities. As a matter of fact, it will ensure that they expend all of their Pell Grant money moving forward and be aggressive about it, so it does, so there's no supplanting. You know, and I was in deep discussion with the educational institutions to ensure that that wouldn't be an issue. And Madam Speaker, this also allows for businesses, in my discussions with Dr. Underwood, by establishing this 529 capability, which is a tax-related exemption capability, for businesses in our community not to defer their tax dollars that are currently going to revenue tax, Madam Speaker. But as we know, many corporations, as they get close to the end of tax year, like to try to look for opportunities to invest in order to be able to either invest in their company or however they would spend some additional resources that they may be forecasting to adjust their tax bracket per se. An opportunity to invest in their workforce that directly affects them. I could envision the hospitality industry, perhaps banking, perhaps insurance, perhaps under other major industries on Guam like GPA has done in order to give scholarships to their employees so that they can become better employees, have better opportunities, and have a chance to make a better living. So it is in that spirit, Madam Speaker, that the outline here has been designed such that we give opportunities to our young people. As I said, it's not a magic bullet. It's $5,000. Many of the institutions have asked if we could split this up to give incentive for the students to stay in, to say, "I'll take that $2,500 upfront, and you won't get the balance until you complete going into your senior year." So there are opportunities to shape this, and just another hand up with regard to an investment that our businesses can make and this government, should we, and I'm sure we are going to see better days at some point, Madam Speaker. I'd like to end by thanking you and your committee for allowing this piece of legislation to go forward, to come out of committee and be on the floor here. And if you're so inclined, would like to add you as a co-sponsor as well, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill 192.
Sidoz Masey. On the motion, well, you made an amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, so on that amendment, then, no objections, so ordered. On the, on the motion, Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it's always a good thing when members of the legislature try and help out the young people, the young adults in our community that want to go to school and want an education. I just have one question, maybe the sponsor can help answer it, and also the public, so they can get a clear idea. Senator, the good senator, the sponsor, could please explain again how this is going to be funded.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker.
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker. I am looking for the section at this point. Madam Speaker, under Section 3, Funding Sources. Funding to administer and conduct the program in this article may come from any or all of the following sources. As I mentioned earlier, a direct appropriation from illegitimate Guan for the express purposes of funding the program created by this article. Public investments from GIDA qualifying certificate programs not already dedicated for particular use. You know, Madam Speaker, this has been a point of contention for many years, for myself and I believe others, maybe even members of this body, that sometimes questioned the value of the current QC program and even its current existence, simply because sometimes we say, you know, "We were a baby now and we're an adolescent. We're an adult. We've grown up." This is an opportunity when this legislation, if this legislation should be passed and signed into law, for GIDA to convene and direct resources from the QC program and say, "Well, you know, you got this QC program now, you get this tax abatement, you're going to move a percentage of this over to the University of Guam for X, Y, and Z." Lot of creativity opportunities here. Company donations to a qualified tuition program known as the 529 program made available to eligible employees for reinvestment and development. So basically, that was the discussion point that I had in my remarks, Madam Speaker, was this will allow for an opportunity for corporations, companies, once this is established, to use that program to make investments into the University of Guam. I could, as I said, easily see, you know, a lot of times, Madam Speaker, I'm going to a little bit of a tangent here, but I'll make it short. A lot of times, we've heard so many times, and we hear these things on the side, "Hey, you know, how come there's so many of so-and-so in this particular industry?" Or, you know, "I think they just want to pay these people, you know, because they'll take a lower wage or whatever else." The fact of the matter is, when I was in the tourism industry for 16 years, there were times with licensed positions and a lot of other professional positions within the industry that there just wasn't enough folks in the local labor force that required specialized skills. Yes, you may have a degree and everything else, but a lot of this stuff is training and skilled training. So I can envision, Madam Speaker, companies in banking, insurance, hospitality, new companies coming to Guam that want to direct their resources to these educational institutions to say, "I need 100 of these employees." Maybe we'll get away from the kind of things that our good vice speaker has legislation on and oversight on and saying, "How come we see all these articles in the paper on, where are these people? Why can't our people fill these jobs?" That's an opportunity, Madam Speaker. And then, of course, the last is, any other source of funding which the use of money for purposes herein is consistent with law. I guess that's just basically an open way of saying, "Well, if this legislation passes and there are other perhaps investment opportunities, this could be the vehicle." And I know it's not, that phrase is, to find that well, perhaps we can work on it in this body, but that is the gist of the funding sources, Madam Speaker, and happy to yield to the question.
Thank you. Senator Guthers, you still have your floor?
Yes, I want to thank the good sponsor for the information, and I'm sure that people out there watching will appreciate the specificity that was shared with them and with me as well. You know, Madam Speaker, money, of course, is always a challenge in higher education, whether it's for academic degrees or certification programs or specialized skills training. But I would like to say that, and I dealt with this for a number of years at the university when I was Vice President of Academic Affairs, the University of Guam, and I know the Guam Community College as well, they have very, very efficient financial aid offices, and they, both institutions work very hard to try to find a way to accommodate students. The Pell Grants, of course, are a very much favored program for assistance to students. And the Pell Grants have specific requirements and limitations on auxiliary funding for students. In other words, if students are on a Pell Grant, they are often limited in not being able to avail of private scholarships or other government assistance while they're on the Pell Grant. So I just want to sort of share this with my colleagues so that everyone understands that I would think that in many cases, this program would be very helpful, particularly for students that don't qualify for the Pell Grants and who also need another option. Now, the university's been very successful in garnering a lot of private sector scholarships and scholarships from civic organizations and nonprofit organizations to assist students, and so has the Guam Community College. Both Dr. Underwood and Dr. Alcada have done tremendous jobs in accentuating their assistance programs. Oftentimes, these are not called scholarships, they're called stipends, book allowances, different kinds of names depending on the kind of program that's been made available to them. One example, I think, should be commended, that every year, one of the nonprofit groups on Guam, the Pangasinan Association, donates 10 scholarships to the university and 10 to GCC. And I believe it's something like $500 per student to assist them with their expenses, whether it's for books or other things. But in this particular bill, as the good sponsor said, there's no money being appropriated by the legislature, and I think all of us recognize the financial limitations we have to work with in this hall. But it does allow for future assistance from the government and certainly through GIDA. That's a good way to approach this, because I have to say, Madam Speaker, and I think also our colleague Senator Ben might agree, that GIDA has not met all of its responsibilities in the existing covenants that it has in awarding GIDA grants to businesses. Among the requirements are that they are supposed to actually utilize our higher educational institutions for providing training programs and skills building for their employees. They're also required to hire so many people from the island, residents of Guam, bodafini residents of Guam, under the terms of their GIDA certificates. And they're also required to consider University of Guam and Guam Community College graduates in their hiring practices. I don't know how well GIDA has been auditing this compliance, but I can tell you from my experience, it has been very weak. And it's time that this legislature holds their feet to the fire. This new approach might be one way to do that, but I'd also like to ask our colleagues to focus on what they should be doing that they may not have been doing over a number of years. And they've been reminded in letters and in other ways that they have a responsibility by law to meet these requirements when they issue GIDA qualifying certificates. At this time, Madam Speaker, I'm pleased to support this bill. I would love to be considered as one of the co-sponsors. I'm happy that it's a creative way to get a program in place and to try to access resources that may be available, and I'm sure this legislation put a lot of pressure on GIDA to make them available, without actually adding to the cost of the government at this time. I'm also pleased because it does not in any way harm any of the existing scholarship programs of the university, where we would simply be transferring money from one scholarship to a new program. And that's very important, that we don't disrupt the existing funded programs that we have, such as the Teacher Corps, the Nursing Corps, and things of that nature. So I'd like to lend my support to the bill, and I commend the author and all those who have co-authored this bill, Senator Yamashida and others, for bringing this forward. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Guthers. So are we going to act, did you make an amendment or asking this? Okay. So on the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Since I'm on a roll here, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of substitute bill number 192-31 COR. I want to thank the good author, Chris Duennius, for having the mindset to work upon this. I do have a couple of questions, and I'm hoping that the, oh, you're sitting on the podium, Madam Speaker, and I don't know, maybe if the good author can yield. It's just based on some of the concerns that were written and as far as the public testimony that was given, and one of the concerns that were brought up was by, from GCC, which was Ms. Carmen Sontis, that noted that they highly recommended an additional language which will specifically state, "After exhausting all federal sources that may be available for economically disadvantaged students such as the Pell Grants, Workforce Investment Act funding, and other sources." The reason why I bring that up is because you and I know that there are a lot of students who qualify based on their employment criteria or their financial stability, staying with their parents or not, who qualify for certain grants that exist out there. And as we look at this scholarship being appropriated to those who are economically disadvantaged, we're hoping that we spread that scholarship opportunity not just to the same pool, but to all others. And as I see that in present legislation, because we're adding a new section to this chapter 3417 GCA, it says that the program shall make every effort to award up to 500, and if you do 5,000, a 2,005 per semester, that's 5,000 per year, that comes up to more than $5 million, right, Speaker? 2.5, right? And that means those who have, who can qualify for those other federal grants will also be able to qualify for this, and when we talk about the economically disadvantage, I want to make sure that it's spread.
Okay. We're going to have to finish with this first because she's specifically asking a question. I'll come back to you.
Okay, so I'm just asking, was that considered and is that anywhere? Because I can't find it.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, it was, and I will have my staff work on this, it was, sorry.
Can we, maybe we should take a brief recess?
Yeah, take a minute recess, please.
Sure. No problem.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
First back in session, Senator Munia Barnes, you still have the floor.
Okay, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work closely with my colleagues in reference to these two amendments that I will proffer also on your behalf after looking over the bill carefully. So, my first amendment would be to add, where would I add that?
Which one are you doing first, the funding source?
I would put it in section three of the funding source.
Page five.
Yeah, page five. Section three.
Probably after, on line 14. Is that what you have?
After line 14, after exhausting at federal, after exhausting all federal sources that may be available for economically disadvantaged students such as Pell Grants, Workforce Investment Act funding, and other sources, the applicant shall be eligible for every child is entitled to a Higher Education Scholarship Act. I guess we can ask legal to put the technical corrections, but right now I'm looking at page five, line 14.
So, it's on page four, right after line three. Is that correct? Okay, so, yes, it's under G, so, on, after line three, on page four. On that amendment.
Yes, I, I, again, Madam Speaker, I'll go ahead and, instead of page five, it would be on page
Four.
Four. Li, after line three, after Guam Community College period, after exhausting all federal, after exhausting all federal sources that may be available for economically disadvantaged students such as Pell Grants, Workforce Investment Act funding, and other sources, the applicant shall be eligible for the every child is entitled to a Higher Education Act. Period. That would be the first amendment.
On the amendment, I know, yes.
Madam Chair, Speaker, we can take a one-minute recess?
Yes, we're going to take a minute recess.
I guess that's what we have at GCC, the Pell, workforce investment program and whatever. And so those three definitively, just kinda, you know, if I've tried for all those three, then, okay, I've reached the end of the road, now I can go to here. But otherwise, to kinda leave it open-ended, you know, that could be a long chase. And that can be a very frustrating one. So I don't see what's, I don't see why we couldn't just say, must have applied for and been denied a grant from the Pell program, workforce investment program or whatever. I guess those are the three ones that everybody applies for. And so then it just kinda takes out that open-endedness to it. And so that would be my motion.
Your motion again, can you please repeat? I'm sorry.
I guess I'll have to see her motion.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna have a brief recess and have a copy made.
Legislatures back in session. We have a new amendment now, which I think everyone should have a copy where it says TCA, TRMB and JWP. So...
Withdraw my motion?
Yes, we're back to you Senator Munia Barnes for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank my colleague Senator Ada for giving me the opportunity to work with him. I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw my motion as proffered, so that we can introduce the TCA, TRMB and JWP amendment.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered. So Senator Tom Ada, you are recognized.
Yes, Madam Speaker. The, I guess the concern was to make sure that before an applicant is considered for this scholarship or this student assistance that we're talking about, is that that individual must have exhausted all the aid that would otherwise be available from other federal programs. And so on page three...
Line 20?
Okay. On page three, line 20. At the end of it, after the word "and" on line 20 shall then add the additional sentence, "and must exhaust all federal sources that may be available for economically disadvantaged students, comma, as certified by GCC. Thereupon, an applicant for scholarship under this act may be considered for this scholarship."
So everybody has a copy of the amendment? And is there anyone who would like to comment or speak on the amendment? Speaker Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to make sure I follow this, because the Pell grants are for the economically disadvantaged students. And so, those are the individuals that this scholarship wants to help. It's very clear. Scholarship program for economically disadvantaged students. So if all of these students must first get Pell, and they qualify and they get it, then who's left? I mean, then the person getting this scholarship is no longer economically disadvantaged. Because if they are, then they get the Pell grant. There's no limit to the Pell grant. I don't think that... Everyone that qualifies for a Pell grant on Guam gets it. We don't max out, you know, $4 million and that's all we get, and we have $5 million worth of students needing Pell grants. We don't. We just don't bump up against that ceiling. So there's always available, these grants available for these economically disadvantaged. So again, it's just what are we intending to do? And are we meeting our intentions with the way we're structuring this legislation? I mean, we all want to help, of course, anyone who gets an education. You know, my dream had always been, and I tried to do this and very early on, was just free tuition. I mean, free tuition for the first two years. And maybe that's the better way. Maybe we just say that we know that people need help going to school. Maybe we just say that we know that people need help going to school and whether they're economically disadvantaged or they're middle class, they still need help. And how do we most efficiently help everyone? Reduce tuition or don't raise it by supporting more local dollars for specifically to keep tuition stabilized or reduce it, just like we did in this most recent bill, Madam Speaker, that you and I worked on and this body supported, with our gratitude, of course, expressed to all of our members, where they said, "We're going to raise tuition." And in lieu of a tuition increase, we supported them with an additional $1.3 million and we kept tuition from increasing to everyone. So it was the most efficient way of helping everyone. And maybe we need to look at it from that perspective, but I certainly support whatever we can do to ensure that we help those who want to better themselves through education because it is the most effective way to lift everyone up out of the depths of poverty and the clutches of poverty by education, development of skills, both life skills and work skills, that this piece of legislation, if enacted, it will do it. It's just, are we doing it in the way we intend to do it? And that really is my question is that, you know, if, again, if it's to do that, then that's the way to go. But if it's to help the disadvantaged, then we're not helping them anymore. They already are receiving help. They're getting it because they qualify and we're making sure that they go somewhere else for that help first. And so who are we helping next? And so if that's the group, then let's be very upfront. Who gets to... I mean, are... The other question I had, of course, in this is that are the Guam High graduates now eligible for this as well? Those that are attending Dodea Schools? I mean, because it just says at Guam High School, and again, that's a question I have, who graduates from a... Seniors or graduates at an accredited high school with a cumulative grade point average of not less than 3.4. So is this an, I guess, bona fide residence of Guam and citizens or permanent resident aliens? So somebody coming in from off island wanting to, let's say, they return here after graduating from high school? And is it their first year out of high school? Is it five years out of high school? So in other words, if I'm in the workforce, I guess so. I mean, I'm sure all of that will be ferreted out by, you know, the administrative rules and regulations for the implementation of these. But I think all of these are questions that should be... That I would like to be considered for the record so that we can give some guidance, if not explicitly in the language incorporated in the bill. It can be gleaned and from the discussion that occurs in what is the intention of the legislature in passing this bill. And that's why I present those thoughts so that when they're looking at what they... How to put this into play, that they'll have, if not the language in the law, then the record of debate on the legislative floor to give them guidance on the intention of the legislature. So I'm not objecting at all. I'm just... I would like to just have more clarity with regards to where we're going and what are we trying to do with this and who are we trying to cover on this? If it's the... Through the cracks legislation, then it wouldn't be for economically disadvantaged because there's no... There would not be any cracks for those guys because they would qualify under Pell. So maybe it's for the nearly the economically disadvantaged youth. And that may be a criteria that we want to build into the language of the law for guidance to those that will implement this, as well as the companion legislation that I'm sure this body will take up and discuss. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On the motion, Senator Guthard, she recognized. On the amendment, I'm sorry.
And just a couple points of information with respect to it. You know, the Pell Grants are pretty straightforward and they have very specific criteria. And you'd be surprised that there are a number of students that don't qualify for it. Even though they really do come from humble means or from, say, middle-class families, they might miss it by a few dollars because they're a little above the threshold. And that's when they begin looking at other options. And so I think it's very prudent that the amendment would require them to first to look for what the federal monies are, what federal monies are available, and if they're not qualified for those programs. Then to look to this program, and not just this program, but other programs that might be available to them. And we've had other programs in the government of Guam as well, not just this proposal, but there are other existing programs, plus private scholarships as well. So I think that we shouldn't assume that everybody does qualify for a Pell Grant because they don't. And I've come across many students who just miss it, you know, and it's kind of heartbreaking when that happens. And, you know, ladies and gentlemen, I would assume that others here who've been connected to higher education may have done the same things where... I know in my career at the university, I have privately, quietly sponsored students who have fell into that circumstance, just so they could meet their dreams and come to university and gladly have done so. And this is going to be really, I would say, a needed option, especially at GCC. You know, at GCC, it's very different from the university, Madam Speaker. The student body is different. The focus is a little different. And I know, because I've worked with students at GCC, they're desiring to learn. They're desiring to get into the workforce in most cases or to accelerate in the workforce if they're already working. And they really do appreciate the support they receive and they use that support immediately. Over at the university, the dreams are a little different. The dreams of the students are a little more long-term, maybe bigger visions, not just for today, but looking forward. You know, they're a little more direct in what they want to do and they're willing to wait to get there. But not at GCC, the students there really are focused to start achieving their dreams immediately and getting into the workforce or enhancing themselves in the workforce with specific skill areas and skill sets and certifications and there, in many cases, there are AA degree programs. So I think this amendment is very important. It also puts a lot of onus on GCC to ensure that before they qualify as student for this program, they first have to certify that they do not meet any of the requirements to receive the federal support. So I do support the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Guthard. On the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the amendment by the three authors. I agree, I concur with what the previous speaker had said about it really then will require the process of where the student and their family will really address all the opportunities. There's another similar bill that talks about UOG and so what I'm going to say now goes back in between GCC and UOG. According to the information I found through Pell Grant, a student can get $5,500 in support. The... At GCC, whether you live on your own or you live with your family, the cost of receiving a... Of getting a college... School education at GCC is between $10,000 and $20,000 for two semesters. At UOG, it's between $14,000 and $21,000, depending on whether you live with your family or you live in a dorm or you live off campus. So the Pell Grant monies would definitely help, that they don't help enough. And so the comments about helping our students, making sure that they look for all the opportunities, and that's another issue. As certified by GCC, that will require the people in the post-secondary system to sit down with their students to say, "Have we looked at everything? Have you taken advantage of this? Have you applied for this? Why or why not?" Because, Madam Speaker, you know as well as I know that there are many funding opportunities, scholarship opportunities out there. And many times, our students of today choose not to take advantage of opportunities. So this amendment will ensure that everybody comes to the table and reviews everything that is available and really thinks about the decisions that they're making. So I think we get more and more to the point where you can no longer easily say that, "I couldn't get an education because there is no support for me." For those people to say it like that and dismiss it as easily, we have to be able to say to them, "There are opportunities for you, but you do have to go through processes." So, Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the amendment. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Tyran, did you have your hand up? Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Tom Ada, would you like to close? So on the Tom Ada amendment, no objections? Hearing none, so ordered. Yes, we're still back giving you the opportunity because I know you had deferred to Senator Ada, so I'm back with you, Senator Munya Barnes, because you do have another amendment.
Si, juz ma si. Talu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do have another amendment and at this time, that amendment will fall at the...
One moment first, we want to make sure if everybody has a copy then too.
Oh.
Is that something that...
I don't... And I was just... I wanted to save a tree.
Okay.
So it's real simple, Madam Speaker. It's at the following sentence to section 34-102G. And it says, page, I want to say five?
Oh, page G starts on page three?
Three.
So it'd be at the end of that?
So it would be four?
It'll be on page four then?
Right.
But, okay.
Okay. On line three, after line... Right? After the word "college," period? It said, "Scholarship funds shall be payable exclusively to GCC for tuition or books or as reimbursement to scholarship recipient upon evidence of prior payment of tuition and books and according to the rules and regulations." Page four.
Page four.
After, on line three, after the word "college," says, "Scholarship funds shall be payable exclusively to GCC for tuition or books or as reimbursement to scholarship recipient upon evidence of prior payment of tuition and books and according to the rules and regulations."
Point of inquiry? Please state your point of inquiry, Senator Guthard.
Madam Speaker, does that mean that the student has to front the money before they can get reimbursed?
Ma...
Because that's what it sounds like.
Madam Speaker, it just says if they are...
I don't think so.
Madam Speaker, if I may yield to that question? Thank you, Senator Guthard.
Yes.
It just specifically says if the student had paid for it in advance...
If they had paid.
Yes.
Then they...
It would... They would then get reimbursed if they...
But they're not required to do that.
No, they're not.
Oh, sorry.
But some people do because sometimes there's a timeline that says you must pay. So usually they may borrow family or friends or what have you.
On the amendment?
Hey?
Hearing no objections?
Thank you.
So ordered.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just want to say, I thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this legislation and I hope the good sponsor will afford me the opportunity to be a part of his sponsorship. So, si juz ma si. Sada ma si.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion now, is there anybody else like to speak on the main motion? Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to go to page three on the eligibility criteria for scholarship applicants. And earlier, somebody had raised the issue about, well, do students from like Guam High, will they be eligible for this? And I think maybe in general, I would like to suggest that maybe instead of bona fide res... Bonafide res... Because you become a bona fide after 30 days or if I can... My parents can produce a GPA power bill, I guess I'm a bona fide resident. But then the other term, I guess, that's more to the point, and that is if the applicant is a dependent of parents who claim Guam as their official home of record. So I would use that as, of course, somebody is going to go to GCC and plans to pursue an associate's degree, it's going to be a bona fide resident of Guam. That's a given. But probably more precisely than I would... So then I would, on line 11, I will add aft... I move to add after that, that verbiage, "And a dependent of parents who claim Guam as their official home of record."
So it's just right after bona fide resident of Guam?
Huh?
Do you want to add it as an extra?
No, I don't understand your question. Do you want me to write this out?
No, I mean, I think we all understand it. It's just that where, on line 11, page three, where do you want it to be?
At the end there, where it says "and," so I should read "and..."
And a dependent.
"...a dependent of parents who claim Guam as their official home of record." And, well, Guam is your home of record, you pay taxes here.
Where there's too many conversations going on, so I'm going to take a brief recess. Okay. (laughter)
Madam Speaker, in light of the fact that this bill has generated a lot of interest, and there's many who want to help make it better on the floor here, I appreciate my colleagues for that. I think in interest of time and moving forward, we can continue this process discussing other bills, and those who have their concerns can work with my office and myself to address the concerns and bring the once-revised piece of legislation out in a better and more perfect form. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Without any objections, so ordered. Senator Monat Tyran, let me see, one, substitute bill number 196.
(laughter)
Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move to accept bill 196 as substituted and move it to the third reading file for discussion.
It'll be a motion then to, yes, to accept, but you're going to place-
Place it on the third reading?
On third reading file?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, motion then to place on third reading, and you would like to discuss it?
Yes, ma'am.
You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 196 is really a simple bill. It, what it does is it requires the Department of Public Works to consider and perform, when it's feasible, nighttime road construction on Guam's roads. And this would require them to include quotations and get estimates every time they issue a bid for any road construction project. Now, what prompted this is we've all experienced the horrendous traffic situation when we're either driving north or south, these road time, these road construction projects really causing major traffic delays, mostly in peak traffic hours, when we're headed to school, when we're headed to work, lunchtime. And I would venture to say that many of us have probably looked at these construction projects and said, how come this isn't being done at night? You go anywhere else in the world, and more often than not, they have their road construction projects being done at night when there are fewer cars on the road. A lot of times, we've heard the Department of Public Works say that they don't do nighttime road construction because it's costly. And what, granted, that might be true in many cases. We don't know for sure if that's the case all the time, because there, we don't always get quotations. So what this bill does is it would require that DPW accept quotations every time they issue a bid from these companies that are interested in doing the work for both the daytime road construction and nighttime road construction, so we can do a comparison and do a feasibility study to see if the government of Guam can, in fact, afford to do a nighttime road construction, and therefore alleviate some of the problems that we face on Guam's roads. Now, based on the feasibility study and affordability, DPW, if they do, in fact, choose to go with the nighttime road construction, the construction projects would be done between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., when fewer cars on the road. Now, I just want to note and stress this fact that this does not require us to enter into nighttime road construction projects. It only requires that we accept a quotation and do a feasibility study on these individual projects. I think that if we do take a cha, give this a chance and allow the Department of Public Works, we would, we would be able to at least, in many cases, alleviate the traffic jams that really cause problems for Guam's motorists. So I ask my colleagues to support this measure and vote in favor. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, on the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes and then Senator Guthertz.
Si, dos, mase, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of this bill, number 196-31, and I'd like to applaud the efforts of Senator Monat Silva Tyran for bringing this up to the forefront. As you know, Madam Speaker, this topic of conversation, having construction work, especially to prepare our road on our island, has come up on one too many occasions. We've had it where the same excuse over and over and over was that the cost will be exorbitant, the potential harm for the construction workers working at night will probably be more intense, as people may not be able to see the construction workers at night working on the road project. And I tend to differ, Madam Speaker. I want to share with you that one who's been able to be stationed off-island, when my husband was in the Air Force stationed in California for a couple of years, I want you to know that every construction project that was done in California happened during the evenings, because it specifically saved a lot of stress and duress from drivers who needed to get from point A to point B, saved a lot of time. It was, for them, the opportunity for them to set up safety precautions on signal lights or blinking lights, so that the drivers have, the oncoming cars or drivers will have ample time to divert, whether it be right, left, over, and under a bypass. It just showed that the magnitude and the work being done when there's less cars on the road was much more sufficient, and it accommodated the heavy traffic and the burden of what was happening during the day. And as in what was said to us in hearings, that more work was done when there was less cars on the road. So I want to thank the good sponsor of this legislation for taking the time to be brave to bring this up to the forefront again, and I support the efforts, and I hope my colleagues support bill 196. And thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of bill 196-31.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Guthertz, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm also pleased to support this bill, and I commend the author for her tenacity in doing this. I think so far in this legislature, we've introduced three or four similar bills. And at the hearings, we've also received a lot of whiplashing from Public Works, if you recall, telling us to stop interfering with what they do. And telling us basically that they only listen to Senator Ada, the chair of the Oversight Committee. I remember that. I remember that at the hearing, and, you know, but we should keep trying. You know, actually, Madam Speaker, the current director, Director Brown, is working very hard. I know she's really committed to her job. And she's a tough lady, and I guess you have to be a tough person to handle that department. That's probably one of the most difficult departments in the government of Guam to govern and to facilitate the mission up. And I think she's made headway. I'm so happy, and all of us from, and I'm sure many of you here are from the Route 10, 16, eight intersection area, are just so happy now that the, most of the construction has been done, although I'm still waiting for the aesthetics of it. I haven't seen that yet. You know, I always believe that when you do construction, it should look better than what was there before. And I know when the aesthetics come in, and I think there'll be some aesthetics when they put down the final paving material, and maybe they plant a few trees, you know, along the way, that things will look really nice. But it has really relieved a lot of tension for the residents of that area, the tri-intersection area, and for all the folks that drive through there to bring their children to school, or to get to work, or to do whatever they need to do. It's meant a lot of savings in time, and gasoline, and frustration, and everything else that goes along with that. So there is progress being made, and I want to commend Public Works, the director, and her staff. But I also'd like to ask, Madam Speaker, that as this bill moves forward, and I certainly hope it passes this legislature, that our friends at Public Works will have an open mind. And I would like to recommend to the director, because I've seen it myself, Senator Barnes talked about her experience in California, well, I've seen this happen, particularly in Hong Kong, where the Public Works crews and contractors come in at night and actually build flyovers overnight. A flyover is an effort to relieve traffic by building another way for vehicles to access a particular area. And they call them flyovers, where they just build things to fly over an existing road and give the cars access to that flyover to get where they need to go, to relieve congestion. And they do it overnight. It's just amazing to see the workers work on these projects, and to see how fast it can be completed. Of course, it takes really visionary engineering and architects to design these projects. And I think part of the problems probably at Public Works is having that ability, although they do have very expensive consultants. I think we're already paying them up to 14 to 17 million dollars already in three years, when the original work order was much, much less. That's another story. At any rate, Madam Speaker, I hope the, it's up to 70 million now? My god. Look at all the schools we could've built. But, and I think Public Works could've done a better job on its own by supervising these projects. They didn't really need a management company to do it for them. But I believe that Public Works should have an open mind on this bill, and when it comes time to testify, to please come down and share with us. Tell us how they have attempted to do this, and why it really costs more. If they do cost-benefit analysis on their projects, which should be part of what they do, and it should help them to close loopholes in the contracts that have been led in the past, because there's a lot of loopholes in Public Works contracts, where contractors get off not doing the projects on time, and there's no penalties for not doing the projects on time, and they go on and on and on, and then they give contracts to folks that are electrical companies and not road contractors, and, you know, all these things happen, right? It seems like the wrong people are doing the work. But I hope, Madam Speaker, that Public Works will have an open mind and sit down with the legislature during the hearing on this bill, I'm sorry, in implementing this bill when it becomes law, we've already had a hearing, and move ahead with it, you know? Tell us why. Why you can't do it at night. Do the cost-benefit analysis. Find a way to do it. If you can do it at night, let's do it. If we need to bring in floodlights, let's get them. But I think it can happen. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Guthertz. On the motion, is anybody else? Senator Tyran, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for coming and supporting this. And if they don't mind, I would like to add them as cosponsors on this legislation, so I'm not the only one that the director's mad at.[1368.12][1368.12](laughter) And I agree with my prima from Chalampago, that more work can be done when there are fewer cars on the road. And I don't think that safety is truly an issue, because they do it everywhere else. And I think that we have some fine professionals at the Department of Public Works who could manage some nighttime construction, and really, it would be at the pleasure of all of the people on the road during the daytime who won't have to wait in long traffic lines. So I thank you, and really, I have to take a moment to commend DPW for their hard work, and the hard work of the director, because she really is tenacious, and she is the right person for the job, because she's been getting it done. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I ask my colleagues to support this measure, bill 196.
You're very welcome. And the motion then to place, Munia Barnes and Guthertz as cosponsors, without any objections, so ordered, and to send bill 196 to the third reading file, without objections, so ordered. I don't have your name on the list. You waved, you were waving at me, and I said, take your seats.[1432.12][1432.12](laughter) Tricky, guys.
(inaudible).
Yes, we're, because once we make a decision and we make the changes, it would be reflected also on 198, yes. So we're gonna move to bill number 203, and I recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that bill, number 203, point dash three one, be placed on the third reading file.
And would you like to speak on it?
And I would like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill number 203-31 is an act to amend subsection 61-542 of chapter 61, title 21, GCA, relative to campaign signs. Madam Speaker, each of us in this room very seriously, very seriously took to heart the work, the work that it took to send our messages across, to get the attention of the voters and the people, and we put great effort into how to strategize. How can we say to the folks that we are the right person to be the voice, to be their voice? And many people have told me that they've never seen campaign season anywhere as they've seen it on Guam. Campaign season on Guam is a real treat. Sometimes it's a trick, but if you look at it the right way, it's a delight, because people are very engaged and very involved. So typically, we have at least 30 people running for our house. But I believe that Public Works should have an open mind on this bill. And when it comes time to testify, to please come down and share with us. Tell us how they have attempted to do this and why it really costs more. If they do cost-benefit analysis on their projects, which should be part of what they do, and it should help them to close the loopholes in the contracts that have been led in the past, because there's a lot of loopholes in Public Works contracts, where contractors get off not doing the projects on time, and there's no penalties for not doing the projects on time, and they go on and on and on, and then they give contracts to folks that are electrical companies and not road contractors. And, you know, all these things happen, right? It seems like the wrong people are doing the work. But I hope, Madam Speaker, that Public Works will have an open mind and sit down with the legislature during the hearing on this bill, I'm sorry, in implementing this bill when it becomes law. We've already had the hearing. And move ahead with it, you know? Tell us why. Why you can't do it at night. Do the cost-benefit analysis. Find a way to do it. If you can do it at night, let's do it. If we need to bring in floodlights, let's get them. But I think it can happen. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Guthers, on the motion. Anybody else? Senator Ty Hearn, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for coming and supporting this. And if they don't mind, I would like to add them as cosponsors on this legislation. So I'm not the only one that the Director's mad at. And I agree with my prima from Chalampago that more work can be done when there are fewer cars on the road. And I don't think that safety is truly an issue, because they do it everywhere else. And I think that we have some fine professionals at the Department of Public Works who could manage some nighttime construction, and really it would be at the pleasure of all of the people on the road during the daytime who won't have to wait in long traffic lines. So I thank you. And really, I have to take a moment to commend DPW for their hard work and the hard work of the Director, because she really is tenacious and she is the right person for the job, because she's been getting it done. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I ask my colleagues to support this measure, Bill 196.
You're very welcome. And the motion then to, please, Munea Barnes and Guthers as cosponsors without any objections, so ordered, and to send Bill 196 to third reading file without objections, so ordered. I don't have your name on the list. You waved, you were waving at me, and I said, take your seats. Tricky, guys. Yes, because once we make a decision and we make the changes, it would be reflected also on 198, yes. So we're going to move to Bill number 203, and I recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that Bill number 203 dash 31 be placed on the third reading file.
And would you like to speak on it?
And I would like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill number 203-31 is an act to amend subsection 61542 of chapter 61, title 21, GCA, relative to campaign signs. Madam Speaker, each of us in this room very seriously, very seriously took to heart the work, the work that it took to send our messages across, to get the attention of the voters and the people. And we put great effort into how to strategize. How can we say to the folks that we are the right person to be the voice, to be their voice? And many people have told me that they've never seen campaign season anywhere as they've seen it on Guam. Campaign season on Guam is a real treat. Sometimes it's a trick. But if you look at it the right way, it's a delight, because people are very engaged and very involved. So typically, we have at least 30 people running for our House. And we have an island that's maybe 31 miles long and four miles wide, and there is very limited land space. This legislature spends a lot of time talking about land, and we all know that it's really limited. And so what happens is we, many of us invest a lot of money into our signage. And there's some really creative signs. Some of us put our pictures on it, and some of us don't. Some of us come up with real witty sayings, and some of us just simply put our name up and say, please think about us. But when you have 30 people running and you have all of these huge signs all over the place on our limited driveways and walkways, the visibility is really, I think, endangered. You have huge signs, and right now, the current legislation allows up to 192 square feet, which is 12 by 16 feet. And some of us in this room used those dimensions. Some of us used smaller dimensions, and maybe some of us didn't even put signs up. Maybe some of us, some of them didn't have to, but some of us had to. What I am proposing is that we talk about this and deliberate, focusing on the safety of our roadways as this election season kicks off. And it is kicking off. You drive through the Village of Agony Heights, you'll see signs up. Drive through the Village of Orat, the signs are going up. And while many of the signs are on private property, I do know that candidates are investing lots of money right now. There's environmental issue to this as well, as we spend lots of money on our trees to put up the signs and the vinyl and the paint. I suggest that as we are creative and intelligent, we can send the same message with more thought, with less usage of our natural resources. But as I said at the public hearing, and I thank Speaker Ben for having a public hearing on this bill, the main reason why I proffered this bill is because of safety issues and the visibility. And more and more people are walking and running and biking, and you've got signs all over the place that are in compliance, but they're just huge. And you've got so many people running, and you can't see. And so it is mostly in that vein that I ask that we think about Bill 203-31, that will then restrict the size of our signage to eight square feet. And an example of that dimension is right there on the window over there. May seem really, really small, but I still suggest that we can, we can get our message across. Yeah, that's, that's the size.
Can we make it effective in 10 years?
It's eight square feet. So I look forward to the deliberation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry. Okay. Senator Munea Barnes, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I stand maybe to ask a point of inquiry on this Bill 203, as it was shown to me that the square feet of the sign in its biggest form would be, as illustrated here in our public hearing room, but I wanted to ask the good author, if she would like to yield, if that's considered a billboard sign, what about the other paraphernalia that's considered, that have been put on the road in public easements in the past, like flyers, pennants, or balloons? And there's other forms of creative paraphernalia that have been created in the last couple of campaign, political campaign years, that deal with digitized forms? And I know that this says government easement, but, and would that also include those that are on private property? So if she would like to yield to that question.
Senator, do you yield to the question? Yes, ma'am. This does talk to public lands only. I'm not addressing private, but of course, that's why we're here, is to open up all conversation. And this, we went specifically to current statute about political signs, and this is actually what's on the books. The amendments offered are reflective of what's in GCA right now. So if we wanted to use this opportunity to add, to talk about digital or whatever else that may not be reflected, of course, we know that every single person in this, in the hall has that right or responsibility. I also want to suggest, Speaker, Senator, that one of our colleagues during our break had said that there's, there are a lot of rules and regs out there already that Public Works perhaps isn't clearly addressing. And so, but for this measure, this is specifically what is in GCA relative to campaign signs.
Yes. Madam Speaker, the only reason why I bring this up, and as I hear the good senator who said this would be only on public easements or public property, which is government property, on page two, item four, "Political signs mean any billboards, posters, banners, or displays which advocate a candidate for political office of any matter to be presented to the electorate for the vote," would mean that any, any political paraphernalia would be utilized, would be included in this. And I know that, does a balloon, is that considered? Because it's not, though the area is up and not situated on the ground, is that included? And I know that some of my colleagues are laughing at me, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we have, it's not, it's not that, that it hasn't been taught of before. We've seen electronic, digital paraphernalia that's hoisted on air weights, I guess you would call it.
Airplanes, airplanes with big signs in the back.
Or, no, 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 but the ones that continue to stand, they're, they're, they're more than four feet. Electronically put up. I mean, does that include that? I mean, what, is, I don't know, maybe I should ask legal advice on this. What constitutes that? Big, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a balloon. A hot air balloon.
So who, you want to know if airspace?
One, one that, yeah.
So you want to know if airspace is government?
Yeah.
Property?
No, I, that is, I want to know.
How about if this ties to a little vote in a gang in Maine? Is that government? Airshore area, right? Airshore area.
Can we take a one-minute recess, Madam Speaker?
I guess take a minute recess, because there's been a lot of
Inquiries about it.
Individual conversations taking place. Okay. Okay.